Please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings in all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Mercy here. Counsel Noon.
Here.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Counsel Rourke. Counsel Scott.
Here.
Counsel Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Here.
Counsel Gitchia.
Here.
Counsel Janess.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
And present.
Any memorials or any moment of silence? Here none, we now proceed with the meeting. First, I would like to welcome everyone to the City Hall Chamber Meeting and welcome everyone who is watching at home as well. We now go to number two on the agenda, the mayor's business 2.1, communication remote Zoom participation. Need a motion to accept place on file by Counsel Scott, second by Counsel Yem. Motion is passed. The second part is important community information. It's a presentation on the Afro-American Community Collaborative Juneteenth Weekend Event. And I would like to ask two representative of the African Community Collaborative to come to the podium and make the presentation, please. Please approach the podium.
Good evening. My name is Serena Morris. I am a third-generation community activist representing the Afro-American Community Collaborative, a grassroots organization formerly known as the Afro-American Community Council, founded by my grandfather nearly forty years ago. Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, commemorates the date on which the enslaved people of Galveston, Texas, recently finally received the news that they were free, June 19th, 1865. Our annual Juneteenth Weekend is an opportunity for the Afro-American community of Greater Lowell to come together in celebration, not simply a celebration of freedom but of the progress attained by generations of fighting for freedoms and rights. This year's theme is Breaking Chains, Building Community. To kick off Lowell's weekend-long celebration, we would like to formally invite you to our fundraiser. On Friday, June 16th, the AACC will be hosting our second annual Juneteenth Gala at Princeton Station in Chelmsford, Massachusetts. Join us for a night of music, food, and unity. Tickets can be purchased on our website, aacommunitycollab.com/hashtagjuneteenth2023. Next, we want to extend our warmest invitation to our fifth annual Juneteenth Block Party. This is a free community event taking place at UTEC in downtown Lowell on Sunday, June 18th, from noon until 6:00 PM. The official DJ for this year's block party is the DJ Chubby Chub, known for his tour with 50 Cent. This event will feature live music, performances by local staples Caribbean Storm and Tea and the Gents, a vendor marketplace where you can explore a wide range of unique local products and services, engage in thoughtful discussion, and connect with your community. We are still accepting vendors at this time. Free food will be available to all guests from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, or while supplies last. A special thank you to Jamal Harden of Benny's Backyard Barbecue, a valuable and selfless member of our community. Jamal has volunteered his time and resources to help us feed as many as possible since the very beginning. His loyalty and dedication to our community has not gone unnoticed and is greatly appreciated. Barack Obama once said, "It's important to make sure we're talking with each other in a way that heals." Our hope is that Juneteenth serves as a way to acknowledge our past faults, help heal current divisions, and move towards the future as a community more united. With that being said, neither of these events would be possible without the support of our collaborators and sponsors. UTEC, Like Lowell, Open Lowell, the Mass Cultural Council, Benny's Backyard Barbecue, Enterprise Bank, Waystone Health and Human Services, Middlesex Community College, the Center for Truth and Racial Healing and Transformation. Thank you for your time, and we hope to see you Juneteenth Weekend 2023.
Thank you for that information and presentation. I always, along with the counselors, look forward to Juneteenth every year. It's both a learning opportunity and also a way to celebrate what we have today as well. So thank you both for coming today to speak. Any other comments or questions from the counselors? Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. As was mentioned, this organization is very impressive. It was grandparents and parents that initially founded it, and the next two generations have picked the ball and continued to carry it forward. The first event that they held, I believe, which was last year, since reorganizing and coming back, was sold out. It was a great event. Many of my colleagues attended, and I would urge everyone to come out, and I'm challenging my colleagues to maybe we get a table from the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Counsel O'Leary?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very proud of this young lady that came before the podium. It's another generation of the Mitchell family, way back forty years, with her grandfather, Robert Mitchell. It's unbelievable how it went from generation to generation and tried to, you know, initiate and preserve freedoms, and it's just very heartwarming to see that it hasn't stopped with the mother, Terry, but it just went on and on, and I'm so proud of this family. We were neighbors for many, many years, and when my daughters were looking for a new routine for cheerleading, along come the Mitchell girls, Cindy and Terry, teaching them how to do it. They're amazing, and I thank the world of them, and I hope to be there with them. Thank you so much.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo those remarks, and it's great to see that the younger generations are coming forward, and we appreciate your coming down and taking this on. It's, you know, it's not an easy task, and it's time-consuming, and again, as Counsel Mercy has said, it's impressive when it goes generation to generation, and it hasn't ended. So, thank you very much.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the speakers for coming down and sharing the information with us. Last year, I did have the fortunate time to be able to go to the block party event. It was a great party down at UTEC. The food was really good, just a great sense of community, and I'm disappointed that unfortunately I'll be missing out this year because I'll be out of town for a work trip, but, you know, if somebody else on the council can go down and have some food for me on my behalf, I would appreciate it. Like I said, it was a great event, and thank you for all the work you're putting in for it, and I look forward to being able to join you next year. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by the counselors? I just want to add, before we vote to place on file, last year, the mayor's office was very proud to help co-host the first Juneteenth Gala last year, which was very successful, and this year you have the partnership with city managers and from the counselors and many stakeholders in the city. So congratulations on another success this year, I'm sure. Need a motion to accept place on file by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Gitchia. Motion is passed. Now go to the next item on the agenda, is three, City Clerk, minutes of the City Council meeting, May 23rd. If there are no comments or questions, need a motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Mercy, second by Counsel Janess. Motion is passed. Counsel Robinson?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and take a couple motions out of order because we have a speaker here with engagement that they have to get to.
Motion by Counsel Robinson to take item...
It would be bundled items, well, 912 and 913.
Out of order, second by Counsel Scott. Let me just read the two motions real quick. Motion number 9.12, Counsel Robinson requests city manager provide an update regarding continued fencing on First Street. Counsel, you want to bundle that as well, just so, because I believe we have the same speaker, speaker on both motions?
Yes.
And to take it out of order and bundle, and second by Counsel Scott, the same. Motion 9.13, Counsel Robinson requests city manager work on drafting a plan to implement a pilot program in Centerville to sweep streets utilizing opposite side parking. Mr. Clerk, please call the regent's speaker.
Rodney Elliott?
Good evening, Mr. Manager, members of the City Council, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for taking this out of order, Counsel Robinson and members. It was several weeks ago, actually it was early spring, when the city manager and I had conversations about the trash at Huntsfall Bridge area and First Street. We did reach out to Mass Highway, and they did do a sweep, and they will continue to do this, but there was still quite a bit of trash there, so I did reach out to the Middlesex County Sheriff's Department. As Counsel Mercy knows, she has done this on more than one occasion. I know most members have probably filed motions on this regarding the trash, and the Middlesex County with Regina Fattick County and Randy Witz, they have scheduled it, and they will be out specifically on First Street where there's quite a bit of trash. But I also had conversations with Counsel Robinson and relative to extending the fence that the city did put in, and quite frankly, it's been quite effective. The trash is not making its way, you know, over the bank and into the highway area. So, you know, that's, I think that's a great motion to extend it. That was sort of a request from the Sheriff's Department. They've been up there many, many times, and when, you know, what can we extend that? Because it does act as a barrier, and so that's the first thing. And secondly, on the same day, we did have a site visit, I did notice that this, you know, the street sweeper has not been able to make it into some areas because there's an awful lot of cars parked, First Street, Second Street, West Sixth, Counsel Robinson knows, and we were having a conversation that maybe we should try to implement, you know, a system that the city of Boston has, or as I have learned, Cambridge, Framingham, Medford. Counsel Robinson mentioned he was aware of the program in Haverhill where, on certain times of the month, once a month, you know, cars that are parked on one side of the street have to switch so the street sweeper can come through. So, I think that's a great idea, particularly in some of the real congested neighborhoods in Centerville, so I wanted to come down and support that idea. Maybe it has to be a pilot. I don't think it applies everywhere because there are some locations where it's not very congested, so just an idea, and Counsel Robinson and I thought it was a good idea to file the motion, so I'm here to support that. Mass Highway has been pretty good with, you know, doing trash cleanup. They, as I mentioned, Sheriff's Department, they're going to do a pick and stick in hopefully, you know, several weeks where the inmates will come out and do a cleanup. So, I know this is an issue that has been up quite some time. I just want to give an update. Mr. Managing is following my predecessor and working with Mass Highway, and they've been pretty, they've been pretty responsive. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for taking me out of order, and I look forward to the report on this. Thank you, Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, representatives. Good to see you in the chamber again. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other regent's speaker? Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Speaker, Rep. Elliott. This is something, again, we've all had, my colleagues and I have had conversations with this administration. I know the manager has been instrumental in bringing, you know, DOT and Sheriff's Office and different organizations into the community to help. I know they have very short staff down there as well, so we appreciate their help. I can't forget Lowell Litter Crew. Traditionally, they do a heavy lift in these areas specifically for Centerville every year. I was with them last year when they did the First Street Boulevard Hill, and I mean, there was TVs, couches, a lot of large, heavy items, and we found those items in the area that does not have the fence. So, I believe the fence was initiated by one of the residents in the area years ago, and the council at the time approved it. So, I did file a motion in the past about this fence continuation of it because I think it does deter a lot of the illegal heavy dumping. I mean, you're still going to get some debris, but it significantly cut back on the amount, and so anything we can do to try to encourage, you know, keeping that area clean because it is a main entryway into our city coming in from 110. Greatly appreciated. As far as the pilot program, as was mentioned, Haverhill does opposite sides of the streets, and that rotates. So, any information that we can get from surrounding communities, I think this is something we discussed early on, and I think it's definitely needed because you can see where our street sweepers are hitting, and the same applies in the winter. You can see where our plows are hitting and where they're not because of parked vehicles. So, I think if we can try to find the easiest way to roll all the pilot and implement this, I think it's going to help us do the work that we've been trying to get to for quite some time. Thank you.
I think that the sweeping one is a great idea. I think the enforcement's going to be the hard part because we still have signs up in some neighborhoods that say the street sweeper's going to come Monday and Wednesdays between this time and this time, and we've never seen them. And some of them in front of the DPW on the telephone poles. So, and that's going to be the hard part, is the enforcement piece, but I do think it's an unbelievable idea to go back to it because that's the only way we're going to get to be able to clean the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a great motion. I had actually made a motion last spring asking for a street sweeping plan that includes short-term removal of vehicles. I believe there was work that had been done as far as starting a pilot around the area that I was discussing was around Sacred Heart, same issue where there's lots of vehicles parked on the road. You can clearly see where the street sweeper can't access, all the catch basins, they're all filled with debris, and so as Counsel Robinson stated, I mean, this is another area around Sacred Heart that I definitely want to make sure is included in the pilot. Thank you.
Here, I need a motion to adopt the two motions by Counsel Leahy, second by Counsel Janess. On the face of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motion is carried. Counsel Gitchia?
Mr. Mayor, while we're still under suspension of rules, could we take 9.19 out of order, please?
Motion by Counsel Gitchia to take item 9.19 out of order, second by Counsel Drinkwater. 9.19, Counsel Gitchia requests city manager have the city solicitor provide the city council with a report outlining how a resident can appeal a zoning board decision with estimated cost to the resident. Mr. Clerk, please call the regent's speaker. Second by Counsel Drinkwater also.
Good evening, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you so much for your service that you do for me. I'm here on... I'm here on behalf of speaking on Mr. Gishia's motion. I live in, I live at 225 Gibson Street in Lowell, Massachusetts. I am, I live in the Tyler Park Historic District. Currently, there has been a number of meetings about building a home on a 4,000 square foot lot in the Tyler Park Historic District on Gibson Street. This particular request does not fit, meet six criteria. Lot area, size of lot, frontage, side yard setbacks, minimal floor ratio, maximum front yard setbacks. So it's not meeting an awful lot. So we've had some meetings. The first meeting was on April 24th and unfortunately it got continued to a later date because I believe one of the zoning members was not there. So then, you know, then some other meetings got canceled here in City Hall. And then we had another meeting on May 22nd. On May 22nd, there was a lot of members of the community from the Tyler Park Historic District that spoke against this particular home being built. I've also submitted 24 signatures from local people that live in the neighborhood and, you know, still there was an awful lot of pushback from the zoning board talking about affordable houses, which this clearly is not because anything on Gibson Street sells for over $600,000. So, you know, I think what we're looking for is to try to figure out if they pass some type of ordinance like this. Because let's be real, there are a lot of 4,000 square foot lots in the city of Lowell and there's a real housing crunch. You just heard, you know, the State Representative Elliott speak about cars and litter. And sometimes cars become litter because streets you really can't get down and there's a lot more one-way streets in the city than there have been ever. So I know that, you know, the elected body here is conformed of eight district councilors and three citywide councilors. And I think it's important to identify some type of comprehensive plan that if things like this pass that don't meet, you know, certain criteria, and we're talking about seven here, that there could be some type of appeal hearing. And I don't know what it costs. I know, you know, we may have to consider going to Superior Court and I think that that's sort of a little cumbersome for firstly, the neighborhood, secondly, for the people that live in the neighborhood, and thirdly, for the butters. So, you know, I just ask that this council come up with some type of plan that could be beneficial to our city residents. Thank you.
Clint Moosh?
Hello, Clint Moosh. I live at 211 Gibson Street. Thank you for having me here today. I live right next door to the property that's about to, they want to build and they're proposing building a house seven feet from my own, which I feel is very close and maybe changing that with a driveway switch. I just have a big issue with it though, with the property being so small. There's many of these sized lots on our street alone where they have garages where they build in places like this, not homes. It's such a very small area and they're looking at building, you know, houses right on top of each other. And I just don't think that's what Lowell's about, you know. I want to make sure that we keep it in a certain way, the old-style houses, especially where we live, that's what they look like and not putting, you know, young-looking homes in an old community, keeping that value of what we have. I don't have any high-end attorneys like the person that owns the property next to me. She's well-known in the community and, you know, she tried to have a house not built on a property that was, I think, 25% larger than the property that's there. She railed against that property owner to not have it done and now she's looking to do it next to my home on a property that's much, much smaller. So I just ask that, yeah, if we do have an appeal or if we get to that point, it just looked at fairly for the average guy that's owning a property. And I don't have any high-end attorneys or things like that that can, you know, push these things through and, you know, they already, we walked into the, it's like they already knew what they were going to say before we got there, which is surprising to me when you go to a meeting. I expect everybody to look at it and say, here's a fair shake for every, you know, every person in the community, not just because you know somebody. Just be fair for everyone. That's how I feel. So thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, any more Regent's Speaker?
Robert Hunt?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Chow, members of the City Council and Mr. Manager and staff. My name is Robert Hunt and I live at 48 Florence Avenue in Lowell, Mass. I've been a citizen of Lowell for 68 years. I've come here tonight to support Council Gishia's motion. I recently also attended the ZBA meeting where we had a neighborhood issue where the applicant was requesting six variances and two of those variances were regarding a grossly undersized lot area and frontage. The neighbors collected 24 signatures and six people got up and spoke. And after all of this, only one or two people on the zoning board really seemed to get it. Everybody else came in with a predetermined notion, we're going to get this going because we need housing in Lowell. The process currently employed is flawed. Every applicant comes with a lawyer and the neighbors opposed do not. The applicant's lawyer gets to speak and then the public hearing begins, either for or against. And after speaking, the attorney gets a rebuttal, but the neighbors or the opponents never get a chance to refute what the attorney says. And you're told you can't speak, the public hearing is closed. If you lose, there is no appeal process currently, whereas the applicant can withdraw without prejudice or ask for a continuance before the vote comes up. But the, I have to say, I've never felt more underrepresented in the city of Lowell than I was at the ZBA meeting the other night. It was absolutely the worst feeling I've ever had in the city in the 68 years that I've lived here. And I come and hope tonight that you can look to move forward and change this. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any more Speaker?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Council Gishia?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I attended the meetings and a few of them got continued. And you know, one of the hard things that wasn't brought up is you had 24 residents there, I mean, 24 signatures and multiple residents there and it's an undersized lot, the house is big, and then even shrinking it down. But the members of the zoning board are telling the people applying what they're looking for, so they'll vote yes. One member even said that this property has been so disheveled or other words, but it's been so unkept that the best thing for the neighborhood was to build a house. Instead of enforcing somebody not keeping up their property, it was told to them, yeah, you can build on anything as small as it is, as long as you don't take care of it. We want, we want you to build there so it's better for the neighborhoods. Even after the neighbors stood up and said, we don't want this, the person said, well, I'm in favor of this. The residents left there extremely discouraged and asked me, how do you go about appealing it? That's where this motion comes from. You say, this is our neighborhood. Not one of the, one zoning board member lives in the neighborhood and he voted against it or he would vote against it if proposed during his speech. And everybody on this board at one time or another has opposed a development or something and, you know, when is it about the resident? When is it about the people who live in the neighborhoods and not handshake deals or whatever's going on? And I'm not going to say what my thoughts are about what went on, but you're telling someone to put it, will you come back for a continuance and redraw this up? After the neighborhood saying, we don't want this at all. You're telling them, you can pass if you do this, I will support you, but until you do that, I'm not going to support you. So they're telling them how to go about, they're not ruling on ordinances or anything or variances or none of that. They're ruling on personal feelings on how to get something done in a neighborhood where you can't drive a plow truck down now. And you want a three-bedroom home put on a 4,000 square foot lot that the requirement is 7,000. So the purpose of this is trying to give the public notice on how they do go about this. And I have researched a lot of communities that residents had a few dollars to do this and they went and fought it to the appeals court and most of them won against the zoning boards. So that tells me that the city may be wasting money. How do you ask a resident to stand up here for their neighborhood? Ask them to pay taxes so that the same lawyer that's sitting over there now has to represent the zoning board against the people who pay his salary? It's complete insanity. They pay him to fight against them to kill their neighborhood the way they like it, which to me makes no sense. So to me, if a neighborhood comes up with that much opposition and there's that many variances, it's a no-brainer. I don't care who my friend is. I'm sorry. This doesn't fit in this neighborhood or what the neighborhood wants. They would rather take the look of this property the way it is. And, you know, it's hard to put in motions like this because you're challenging a system that hasn't been challenged this way. But it's about time we start challenging this system as a city council and say, look, you know what? This is our neighborhoods. We have eight district councilors and every one of them are going to go through this at one time or have in another. And I hope that we can find a resolution without having to go to an appeals court with this whole decision, but the neighbors are ready to do this. So the city is going to outline how they actually can do this and come back with it, no matter what the drawing comes back. That's the neighbor's wish. Thank you.
Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll refrain from speaking about this specific project that's before a city board. I don't think that's, that should be our space. But I do have some questions that I'd like to direct to the solicitor. Mass General Law covers the appeal process for a zoning board of appeals, right?
Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, it does. The appeals process being two avenues, Superior Court and Land Court. Taking a step back, there's also, there's also a direct appeal to the actual board itself, so that's got 30-day window. And then when you go to Superior or Land Court, it's a, when you go to Land Court, it's in Superior Court, it's a 20-day window, whereas when you apply directly to the board, it's a 30-day window.
Okay. And this might be something for the manager, but I feel like having this basic structure of your appeals options, having that posted on our website might be the first step to take here. Somebody goes to the ZBA page, I don't know if there's a link to say Appeals, Appeal of ZBA Decision, that just would line it, outline it for people who want to file an appeal, where they have to file it, how long they have to file it versus, you know, people not knowing and then, you know, calling councilors and looking for this information, which I understand it can be, you know, difficult to spelunk through the Mass General Laws to try and find this stuff. But this structure already exists, so I don't think we necessarily, at this time anyway, I don't think it would, it would be great for us to add more layers to this. I think looking at what's in the Mass General Laws and making sure that that's available to residents in an easy-to-find way on the city website is probably the way to go. Maybe if we had handouts we could give to the clerk's office or the ZBA themselves so that, you know, they can have them at their meetings and say, hey, if you want to appeal, here's, here's the form that tells you what you got to do. Because, you know, I'm all for empowering our residents to do what they can do. I also just want to say that the wording of the motion, I have concerns about the estimated cost to the resident part of it, just simply because I don't know how the city would ever be able to estimate that because I think it's going to vary greatly depending on what's being appealed and how it's being appealed. So I don't know that that, that might be something we can accomplish, but I'll leave that to the administration and their report. That's everything I can come up with right now. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. I've seen battles in my own district and I've seen residents bring forth some legitimate concerns and sometimes they're listened to, sometimes they're ignored. I think highlighting the process that we have in place and also providing any additional options that might be provided for this council to have a conversation on to afford our residents would be great. Yes, we need housing, but that can't be the excuse for everything. I mean, we have parcels like HCID and other areas in the city that can provide substantial numbers of housing available. That's not infringing on neighborhoods. That's not giving six or seven variances to squeeze something in that probably shouldn't be squeezed in. You know, housing is very scarce nationwide. You know, obviously, the supply doesn't meet the demand, we're all aware of that. But to keep hearing, we need housing, we need housing, so we're going to move this forward, it does nothing to help the problem. It creates more problems, actually. And I really think we do need to get the information out to the public as to what course of action do they have? Because I've seen instances where you have 15 residents that are directly impacted by a proposed development, come and speak on their behalf, bring forth whatever their concerns are and unfortunately, it gets swept under the rug sometimes. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. I just think the process, we need to do better and show the residents, if this happens, these are your options. Thank you.
Council Lowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I learned of this request. I've been there, couldn't make the meeting, but this request is a dangerous one when you have 4,000 square feet, small lot. I have a lot next door to my backyard, actually, bigger than this. What's going to happen here is that, one, you allow this, this variant hardship, you have to have a hardship. The lot itself was subdivided a long time ago and there's no hardship there. When, one, you would divide this lot and you said, okay, my lot too small now, 30 years later. The hardship that created, you created yourself, in this, in this lot is something that's going to set precedent down the road. If I were to want to build another house next door to mine, the zoning board can, they can say no, but then again, I'm going to appeal that because you already did. You give that Gibson Street 4,000 square feet, mine is bigger than that. And imagine other areas in, around the areas that has, have lot that big. I remember a while back when on, I believe, across not too far away from mine, the gentleman subdivided his lot bigger than this and the zoning board appealed, said no to it. I testified at that, I testified at that hearing. So this is not, this should not happen. It should not put this on, you know, the neighborhood that's already impacted by it. Truly, yes, Mass General Law allow for an appeal period, a process here, but you have residents that sometimes don't have the money to pay for an attorney. The cost associated with attorneys happen to be, you want to hire the best attorney. The best attorney is going to cost you more money and the resident's not going to be able to afford this, you know, unless they come together. Even they come together, there's going to be a lot of money. So the requests, this request asking for the city solicitor to look, look for a way so that maybe the resident can have a shot at appeal this, should the zoning board or appeal approve this going forward. So I think that that is a fair way to ask for, for the resident. But I hope that, I strongly hope that this does not pass because it's bad for, it's bad for the area. It's bad for not just the Highland, but also in the South Lowell and the city of Lowell. 4,000 square feet, come on. Thank you.
Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to, first off, I'd like to thank our boards for the work that they do. I don't want to seem that we're not grateful for all of their hard work. But I do agree with Council Gishia's motion as far as having a residence guide type of, you know, guide for property owners on not just the zoning board, but any other board decisions, just kind of to put it out there to let them know there are steps that they can take, you know, next after they, they have not been successful. Thank you.
Council Gishia?
Mr. Mayor, could I have a roll call on this motion, please?
Sure. Before I do a roll call, I just want to speak from the podium real quick and...
Before I do a roll call, I just want to speak from the podium real quick, and I want to thank all three speakers come to speak today. And as you heard from all the councillors, this is issues that all the councillors are very concerned with and the city's very concerned with. And even though there's outline in Mass General Laws already, I do agree with all the councillor comments that we need a guide, a simplified guide specifically to our city for the rest of the residents to look at and to follow. With that said, as per request by the maker of the motion, Mr. Clerk, please roll call.
Counselor Mercy?
Yes.
Counselor New?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Ruhr?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Getchea?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Legge?
Yes.
Anyways.
Mr. Mayor, while we're under suspension, may I please make the motion to take 9.14 out of order as well, please?
Motion by Counselor Robinson to take item 9.14 out of order, second by Counselor Mercier. Motion 9.14, Counselor Robinson requests city manager work with the community and the proper channels to restore the iconic Lowell Sun sign, second by Counselor Mercier. Also, Mr. Clerk, do we have a registered speaker? Counselor Robinson?
Jeremy Denzer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council for letting me be here tonight. My name is Jeremy Denzer. I live at 33 Middle Street in downtown Lowell. And I'm a fairly new resident of Lowell. I've lived here for three years, and, but I've lived in Massachusetts for almost 25. And before, five years ago, I never even came to Lowell, because it has, I was told, "Don't go to Lowell, it's scary, it's an awful place, you don't want to go there." And when we came here, I fell in love with this city. And literally, I'm like Lowell to my heart and soul now. I'm 100% a Lowell resident, and I will be here for the rest of my life. It's, it's, my heart is with Lowell, and I love Lowell. And a lot of people around town know me because I have a social media presence where I promote all the great things about this city. All the things that there are to, to do and to see and the cultural, culture and arts of the city, and just all the things that I love about Lowell. And so, one of the things that's bothered me since I moved here is the Lowell Sun sign flickering in the night. It's like, to me, that's what a lot of people, when they think of Lowell, they think of that. They think of, it's like rundown, it doesn't work, it's not, it's not upkept, and I know that that's not true. And so, I reached out to Cory, I talked to Wayne, my own city, my own councillor in my district about this, and I'm very passionate about this, because I want, I want the sign to shine and be a beacon of all the great things that are about Lowell, and to show that we're a great city with so much to offer for people outside of our community. And I did have the pleasure of speaking with Lowell, with Stephen Stoll, right before this meeting, actually. And I know that there are talks in place about, the right parties are involved, but I want the city council to back that and push that, to really make that, it's an iconic symbol of the city. It's our Sitco sign compared to Boston. And it should, it should shine in the night for everyone to see in this city. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak, and you are now a Novalian. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. It's not much to say. Thank the speaker. I mean, and that's a story I myself have bumped into time and time again in our city. I've met a woman that just relocated from down the Cape and actually had an art gallery and fell in love with Lowell. She's a Lowell resident, she's looking to eventually open an art gallery here. We have a lot to offer, and I think it was put best by, by the speaker, Jeremy. The Lowell Sun symbol or Lowell Sun sign is pretty much Lowell Sitco sign, and I couldn't agree more. I think with some minor upgrades, a little bit of legwork, which I believe Mr. Stoll's already been in contact, because it's something that he's been passionate about pre-pandemic. It kind of slowed down, maybe a conversion to LED to be a little bit more energy efficient, brighter, but I think that's something that I hope my colleagues will stand by, because we hear the enthusiasm from our residents, and, I mean, it's only right. At night, we're lighting up our bridges, so let's light up that Lowell Sun sign. Thank you.
Counselor Kishia?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the city manager or to Giovanni, if you reached out to the owner of the property, could they apply for CPA funds to, to use for, to do that?
Through Mr. Manager to Giovanni?
I would have to confirm whether or not the sign itself has been designated a historic element, but if so, it's in, it's within the downtown historic district, so it could be eligible for funding if, if they wanted to apply for that.
Could I make a motion to have DPD look into that and bring it back to the council as a, a report?
Yeah. Motion by Counselor Kishia for the DPD to get a report back to the council, second by Counselor Drinkwater on favor, say aye, opposed, say no. Motion is carried. Are you done with Counselor Kishia? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you, my colleague, for bringing this forward, and thank you to Jeremy for coming down to speak on this, but also thanks to Steve Stoll, because I, as, as folks have mentioned, I know he's been hard at work on this for a while, and it's a very complicated thing, because, you know, the sun still owns the sign, but they don't own the building, and there's a lot of back and forth going on there. And I understand that, that Steve has been able to make some significant progress on this, so I look forward to seeing it come to fruition and having that sign shine brightly and consistently again. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to interject the fact that some years ago, I made a motion similar to this one concerning the, the Sun sign. And the reason I made the motion is because in the word "sun" and the U in the middle, half of it was "off," and it looked like "the sin." And I didn't want Lowell associated with any sin in this city, so I made the motion, and they put the LED in, and it became the sun. So I thought that was very critical. So if we can just keep it up there, I really wanted to say, "Vote for Alita, vote for Rita," but they wouldn't, they wouldn't do it. But anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Good motion.
And are the comments or questions by any of the councillors? Here, now, I do want to make comment on your motion to Counselor Robinson, and thank you, Jeremy, for speaking. You're a great Novalian, even though you are new to the city, but I feel like as a mayor, I'd probably like you to be a true Novalian. But the, the motion is great, you know, the, the Sun sign and the Lowell Sun newspapers has been a part of Lowell history for, for a very long time. It's been part of the heyday of Lowell when the economy was thriving in the city, but lately, we see this go hand in hand with the declining of the Sun newspaper, the Sun media. I feel like the, the sun is going down on me, to phrase the, the song. But so I, I in full support that, you know, the sun somehow, whether through the, the building owner or whether the city could work together, coordinate to light up the sun again. So the sun will never go down in us, in the city of Lowell, that the city will always be bright and shining. If no other comments or questions, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Scott?
Well, we're still under suspension of the rules. Can we take 5.1 votes from the city manager?
5.1, motion by Counselor Scott to take item 5.1 out of order, second by Counselor Yem. Item 5.1 is a vote from the city manager. 5.1 is a vote to authorize payment of bills incurred in excess of appropriation of schools. Give second reading right here, so, I can't read, give me a second here. You can give me the right one?
Yeah.
It's right here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, hold on a second. Okay, let me just read the, the votes here. City Lowell and the city council vote to approve the payment of unpaid invoices from prior fiscal years for the school department. Mr. Manager, through Mr. Manager to Dr. Hall. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Scott. Mr. Clerk, please acknowledge the speaker.
There's no registered speaker.
Dr. Hall?
James Hall, 73 Alcott Street, CEO of the Lowell Public Schools. Here, Ms. Turner had a last-minute conflict, so I'm here to represent the school department. I'd ask that you consider these unpaid bills and vote to approve them. I have reviewed all of them, and there are affidavits attesting that we received the services. Of course, they are late. We've instituted some protocols and done communication to try to reduce these. Every year, we, we regret you have to look at them, but with such a large operation, some of these are inevitable. So I ask you to consider that and approve these. Thank you.
Counselor Kishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to Dr. Hall. Dr. Hall, you just brought up there were certifications, but it's only a one-sided certification. Normally, when you get certifications of bad bills, you have a city person and the vendor signed on it. But in every single one here, there is no city verification on the signature piece for Mass General Laws. Why is that?
I couldn't comment as to the city administration protocols, Counselor.
This is a school department verification, not the city's form, right?
I believe the vendor, the vendors are certifying is what I was referring to.
Just the verification of overpayment isn't being charged for overcharge. So it's basically saying that you got a vendor certification here, saying that they're charging you for services that were there, but there's no city person verifying that these charges are correct. You're standing here, but I don't see the person who actually witnessed any of the work done have a verification that this was actually done. And some of them are two years old. And I think even past that, I think that it should come back and it should have a city side signature. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city solicitor. Have you had a chance to review these also, the verification forms?
Through Mr. Manager to the solicitor?
Yes, I have.
Would you agree that it should have a city employee signature on it that says, that follows that?
Yes, typically, under the state statute, there would be a city employee signature, a city employee signature on that verification. I did notice that there is a cover sheet, and I'm not sure this is the exact same thing that you're referencing, but it's labeled certification of products, services received. I know, it looks more like a cover sheet. Typically, you would expect to see the signature line right next to the vendors, but yes, to answer your question, normally you would see the second signature on that page.
Everyone I've ever seen had a person, an employee of the company that was paying the bill or had the work done on it, so none of them have those. And then, Mr. Solicitor, while, while I still have you, has any one of these companies reached out to you under bad bills or to the city and said that, you know, "We're owed this money, we're thinking about suing or anything?"
No, they have not.
I want to work for one of these companies, because one of them's owed $110,000, and they haven't, nothing. And that brings me to an interesting statement on, on that company. They performed a service with no contract. Under Mass General Law, that falls on them, not the city. And I don't know how the city can pay bills for any contract that's over $100,000 in debt without a contract signed. How did, and then they say it's an emergency. Here's, here's what they say, and it's a transportation piece. It says basically it was an emergency service. Did they get a 30B waiver for emergency services to procure that?
A lot of these councillors deal with transporting children that we owe compensatory services for if we didn't do it, so that's a lot of the emergency.
I understand that. I understand what the function was. I'm not asking about the function, I'm asking about the procurement. So we can't use, because it was this, that's why we did this, and call it an emergency. The state only allows emergencies to be used under certain definitions under 30B. These funds do not fall under that. You can ask for an immediate one until it's done. And the, the crazy thing about this bill is October 21st was the first bill. The contract didn't even go out to bid until April, when it came back. It came back in April, so that's what, three, seven months later before it was executed? And when the contract came back, whoever wrote this, I guess it was the Assistant Superintendent of Finance wrote this, they blamed the city for not having the contract executed when the vendor didn't have the insurance piece together. That's what we were told from the law department. So was it the vendor didn't have it together, or are you saying the law department didn't? Because obviously, the school department didn't do their homework and ask the law department, what is the reason why and how do we do it? Seven months later, there is no way this city should absolutely pay any of these bills, no matter what the services run for under 30B. And I think the CFO will tell you that. You can't incur $110,000 in cost with no contract and then expect payment and call it an emergency. Without filing through the state.
Through Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct, that is not the proper procedure for procurement. However, the services were performed, and I would just be concerned that if payment is not made, that perhaps the vendor could bring action against the city because services were rendered.
So I guess my point is to you, Dr. Hall, how do we hold employees accountable for doing this? Because if I go to the IG's office with this, I promise you, it won't be a good outcome for the city.
Right, and I do appreciate your concerns and for pointing them out. We do try to emphasize with the people handling these, that the procedures are in place for a purpose, and they are important. A lot of these vendors, too, continue to provide us services, so another risk, if we didn't pay for what was provided for us, they could cease doing business with us as well, which could impact services to children as well, so that's another aspect of this.
We, we all understand what the service was for. We're talking about the procurement and the liability that your department put the city under, because, don't worry, the school department can't get sued, it's the city who will have to pay. We all, we learned that, you know, a couple months back. And one of the other things is, we asked back on March 28th to scan these bills, make sure they actually met what you're asking for. CVAT. If you look at it, it has a date of invoice of 10/4/2022. It says the function was performed, it says final installation, commission, training completed during February vacation week of 20, of 2/20/23. Why is that in bad bills when it's still this fiscal year? When it's still this fiscal year? Why is it in bad bills?
I'm not sure the exact answer to that, Counselor.
But you're giving, they're giving us stuff that says the service was rendered in this fiscal year, and we're trying to pay it in bad bills. And we asked this on March 28th, so this is not a bad bill. It's still in the current pay cycle. So I don't know how CVAT, either they're missing form and writing down things that are not true. That's why I asked about the certification of the services, and now when you look, you can, I can hand these to you.
I do know on that one, there was some discrepancy in regards to whether or not it was an actual bad bill. It was a two- or three-year project that started during COVID, and apparently, there wasn't enough detail in the first submission, as you pointed out. They did provide more detail, but stated they didn't provide enough detail in the first go-around, because they were working under a contract.
But the problem is that you're asking us to, okay, a bad bill, that's not a bad bill, under the invoice that's in front of us. And we asked back on March 28th to go back and look at that. CVAT, it's, it's under PO number 21106693. The invoice date is 3/7/2023. It says the work was done in, on 2/23, during February vacation of this year, so I don't know how this is a bad bill.
Through Mr. Manager, Mr. Baldwin might shed some light on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I'm sorry to interject, but there are two invoices that are subsequent to one another. I have to assume this is a typo on the invoice, because the next one in invoice number 63574 also states that the work was performed over April vacation 2022. So, you know, I can only assume that the one that says 2023 was a typo, because you're right, it wouldn't, it would be a current year.
There's multiple that say that. Only one of them says in 2022. So what I'm getting at is, you're asking me to pay bills that are not functionably correct. You're asking me to pay bad bills without a city employee's signature on it. So I don't know if any of this stuff was even done. It wasn't done for a company to wait this long for this kind of money, never reach out to the city and say, "Here it is." And I get why you're here, Dr. Hall, and I thank you for being here. But on March 28th, we asked, this body asked them to go back and send us something that we could actually vote on that was true. And these things are not true. They're not, so I can't support it. So they should go back and bring us back the right bills and have the right signatures on it and make the bills whole. No procurement agency would ever pay these bills. They would scan these and send them back to the business and say, we know this was done on this date, we have verification it was done on this date, put it to work. Right now, I see a bill from a company that's telling you, trust me in this way, and everything's okay. While the CFO wrote the Law Department this and this person that, and it's tough to watch, so I can't support it.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Dr. Hall for being here tonight for this. But I have to agree with my colleague, Counselor Gitcher. Until these dates are cleaned up and it's obvious that these are actual bad bills and we have signatures from a school department employee on these certifications, as the solicitor has mentioned is standard practice, I can't in good conscience support paying these without that information. So I'd ask that it be sent back to the school department for further revision and to come back here so we can actually approve this. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions on some bills, too. I appreciate that you came down, Dr. Hall, but like even the, this Bay State seating, this is more of an estimate than an invoice. It says three, you know, repair three auditoriums, estimate three to four days, days will not be charged, but yet it gives us an estimate of material and an estimate of time, and yet we're going to pay the whole bill, and we don't even know if they worked three or four days or if they used all the parts. I mean, it's just, this is just sloppy accounting, and this is why we're all frustrated with it. I know that we're only given the approval, and we're actually not paying the bill, and the money's coming out of the school budget, but this is like sloppy work, and this is, we've never had this. What, you know, 10 years ago, when I was on school committee, I don't think we ever had bad bills go through. I don't remember stuff going through like this. And then, all of a sudden, here they are again and again. So it's very frustrating for us to look at these bills when it seems like there's no accountability.
Any other comments or questions from any of the counselors? Just have a quick comment from up here, maybe a question. Thank you for being here, Dr. Hall. A few bills here presented all at one time. Are any of the bills, it sounds like the counselors here are not satisfied with confirming with the validity of the bills, but this is the second time the school department is here to present these bills. Is there any deadlines to any of these bills? Do you have time to fix these issues and come back to the next meeting with the corrected request?
We certainly could make the changes that the counselor requested. Mayor, I would like to point out that Ms. Turner's memo, in effect or functionally, states that the work was done, and she reviews it in requesting payment. There's no dispute from the school department's perspective that the work was completed, and that's the purpose of her memo. I do understand that the counselor is wanting a different form. We could easily effectuate that, and I'm sure a city officer could attest to the work being done as well. So if that's the wish of the body, we could do that. But from our perspective, there's no dispute that the contractors performed as requested in their requesting payment.
So it does sound like you have time and you understand the issues at hand here, even though Ms. Turner has worked on it, and I think just maybe just a way of different look at things, and if the school department, if she can fix that, and then maybe you can come back at the next regular meeting. Would that give you enough time? That's essentially two weeks from now. Is that okay? Counselor Noon, and then Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Hall, for being here. I do agree with what's said by the CFO that service has already been rendered, provided for all this, what we call bad bill, 25th of the invoice here. You know, I hear my colleague concerned about no signatures either of Ms. Billy Joe Turner's, but the memo, for me at least, verified actually that she acknowledged that the service basically been provided and that, and that all these, you know, providers have done so. So I would suggest, I would say this to, we need to have a clear direction. If we want Ms. Turner's and/or school employees to verify each and every one of these invoice, you know, we say so with clear direction so that, you know, Dr. Hall can go back. The next time Dr. Hall and/or Ms. Billy Joe Turner, you know, come, we should be square away rather than come back and forth, back and forth, you know. So I would say, okay, we want the school employees, in this case, CFO of the school, Ms. Billy Joe Turner, to verify each and every one of these invoice, would say, okay, I verify what they did. They did perform the service, and that's what we owe them. Then, that's the only things, then, you know, make it clear so that when Dr. Hall and/or Ms. Billy Joe Turner come back the next time, that we all square away, because this is, this service has been done. I mean, the longer they wait, I'm sure, one, we are not paying them, they already provide service, why are we not paying them? They're going to take us to court. It's going to waste time, you know? And the manager's letters also indicated urging us to do so because of the sufficient funding, the funding's there for each and every one of these invoice. So I hope that Dr. Hall and/or Ms. Billy Joe Turner's come back the next time, that, you know, we are clear and we don't have the question that we have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city auditor. I just wondered if Kelly has looked at these invoices and things. Do you find what has been said to be reliable? Or do you think that, do you think there's no problem with it, or it was typos?
Through the manager to Madam Odo.
Yes, I have reviewed them all, and I do agree with a lot, with everything that's been said.
I'm not trying to put you on a slide.
The typo on the CATV, yeah, that was confusing. But the problem with that one, it was a purchase order that was issued in 2021 stating that the services started in '21. There were no, there was no activity in 2022, so the purchase order was closed. And now, they're coming back billing us in October of 2022, which is, you know, a fiscal year 2023 bill, which wouldn't. But it all, it depends if the work was done during February or April vacation, then it was a prior year, services performed in a prior year. So that one still needs some details to be.
So if you were sitting in my spot here, would you vote to return it back again? And I hate to put you in a spot, but you know more about this than I do, so that's why I'm relying on another opinion.
Right, I mean, I.
Because I don't really have a problem to support what is evident rather than face the fact of being sued by businesses that are out to get paid, and we're just delaying it again. And yet, it's legitimate questions that people have, so I'm like in a quandary here, trying to figure, what is the best thing for us to do?
Right. I mean, you know, they are legitimate questions, but the, you know, the department, the school department incurred these obligations. That, you know, I think is pretty clear. They did incur the obligations, so therefore, we are liable for them. So whether we, you know, put it off until the CFO can come and speak for these herself, or if you were to approve payment tonight, I mean, we are going to end up paying them.
Well, we are going to pay eventually, so I'm asking through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Hall, Attorney Hall, is waiting an option, or we don't have, is time of the essence here? What do you, what do you think? What's?
And there's numerous things to balance, Counselor. You do have vendors that are probably upset.
Yeah.
You know, the finance office could be working on other things as well. I do appreciate what you all have said about wanting more detail, though, and I guess that's up to you.
Well, I hope nobody's upset, because I think they have legitimate concerns, although I want to support this. I know people want to get paid, but they have questions, and that we have to weigh both sides, so thank you. I think we'll just wait, I guess. Thank you.
You also, Counselor? Okay. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that the information that we have before us tonight isn't perfect, and even some of the questions that were raised previously have not yet been specifically answered. However, what we do have before us is a signature of the school department CFO stating that the services here have, in fact, been rendered. We also have the chief operating officer here before us tonight certifying that the services have, in fact, been rendered. And we have signatures from the vendors, signed under the penalties of pains and perjury, certifying on their behalf that the services have, in fact, been rendered. And what this comes down to for me is that, yes, we need to vote in order for the school department to move forward and pay the bills, but these bills are paying, being paid out of the school department budget. It's not coming, it's not our financial responsibility as the city council to pay these bills, but it will be our financial responsibility as a city council if there is a legal action taken against us because a vendor hasn't been paid. So taking all that into consideration, and again, acknowledging that, again, the information isn't perfect, based on statements of the school department CFO, the COO, and the vendors themselves, it would be my position that we should move ahead and pay these bills tonight. From what I'm hearing, it may not be fatal just to wait another meeting and get the information back, but to me, when you talk about the, I guess, the potential risk that we're taking on financially of not paying, it's significant, were a legal action to be taken by one of these vendors who, in fact, has provided a service to the city through the, through the school department. So my position would be that the information is sufficient to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I agree that this looks very sloppy. Unfortunately, it's, things happened, whether it's pandemic, whether it's bookkeeping, whatever happened here. Even some of the things on the CAVT project, where there was scopes of work written up and this blank lines, agreed on behalf of Lowell Public Schools, agreed on behalf of CAVT on the scope of work, I mean, I guess this is a learning experience for everyone. I think it's pretty clear that the council is looking for clarity, and if we have to deal with a situation like this again, I think it's going to be something that we're going to look for thorough information. And I think my colleagues have raised some valid points. We talk about risk to the city for non-payment, which we're looking at maybe a period of two weeks, but we also have to balance that with the risk to our residents of the tax money for services rendered that it's not really proven. So I think it's reasonable. Through you to Mr. Hall, if you think two weeks, coming back at the next meeting and kind of fill in some of the blanks, then we can definitely make a decision either way within two weeks' time. This was raised when it first appeared before us. We're still missing some of the information that we were looking for, so any of those blanks that can get filled in in the next two weeks so we can come back and make an informed decision, I think would be beneficial. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would support coming back with more information on this. I do have a question, I guess perhaps for the auditor or CFO Hall. On the last item, which is Hagerty Palo Sports and E2E Exchange, they reached out at the time to close the invoices. I suppose that was for the end of year that they were closing out the POs, I mean, not the invoices. What is the procedure? The person that initiated the PO didn't realize there was a bill that was open for these items? I'm a little confused by that, how that could happen. It's a compliance company. I would think that they would know that they weren't paid.
You also, Counselor Scott?
No.
Through Madam Odo.
On the E2E exchange, that is a contract, and the problem with that is they had a purchase order for an amount, and they just underestimated the cost of that. There were some fixed costs that were paid quarterly, and then, at the end of the year, there'd be a 3% of, it's, let me just get to it. Yeah, it's a 3%, there was a 3% charge for the category of savings. It's for, sorry. But they underestimated the cost of it, so the purchase order was not set up for the correct amount. So they had additional $17,000 that they couldn't cover. They never, they said they called the vendor, and there were no invoices, so they never increased the purchase order. The purchase order was closed, and now they come back with a bill, and because it wasn't encumbered, they have to get council approval to pay.
Okay. It's just, the process sounds a little sloppy to me.
Yeah, it is.
I would say, I mean, that's the only way I could describe it. So I guess going forward, I guess this conversation has happened time and time again. I'm not just on the city side, I mean, we've had school, school side, we've had city-side invoices that also slipped through the holes. And I just think that we need to have a further discussion about how we can clean up the process for the end of the year, making sure that the POs are all closed and have the appropriate amount in them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make motion that we table this and ask that the school department get together with the auditor, our legal department, and our CFO, and once everybody's happy, the package can come back to us for approval. Because right now, there's, there's things that the city solicitor have said aren't really to standard, there's things the auditor said aren't really to standard. So I think getting their eyeballs on it and having everybody work together and bring a package back here that we can, we can be confident, we've dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's and can pass this. I think it's, I think it's the way we got to do it. I understand the concern of a potential lawsuit being filed, but if we can get this done in two weeks, even if somebody files a lawsuit tomorrow and we vote to approve it in two weeks, that lawsuit is now moot. So I'm not concerned about that costing the city any money at all. I think that's the way to go, so that's my motion. Thank you.
Mayor, could I speak on the motion?
Yeah, motion to table, no discussion, it's just a straight roll call.
Yeah.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gitcher?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Ten years.
The meeting so far, we have not followed the agenda. We've been suspending the rules all night anymore, suspension of rule. If not, we now go back to the, where we left off the agenda, which are the communications from city manager. These are the motion responses. We'll start with the motion response alphabet A, masses at the shrine. Counselor Mercier? Your motion response is coming up on masses at the shrine. Do you have any comments?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for that response to the motion about the shrine. And the representatives of the shrine, they take a charitable view of this issue, and as a result of their religious beliefs, they believe in providing help for the unhoused. I believe in that, too. I have compassion for the unhoused, but that compassion ends when they harass and intimidate our elderly churchgoers, and they won't take no for an answer. So when our elderly get frightened, that's when I made the motion. And I know that the police are stepping up. I was there for a procession yesterday, and the homeless were there, but the police told them to move on. You know, they seem to congregate there.
I would say myself in case, Ms. DeRoges as well, that's something that we can work through to find out what is appropriate, what is, you know, what is on public buildings and whatnot, obviously not City Hall, but I do go back to again trying to look at some of the garage space as people are walking through it. We would like to try to brighten that area up. And I know I'm giving Mr. Crew a little bit of a shocker there. We're trying to, trying to get this done, but there is a process that we have to go through with, with bidding and whatnot. So we are going to try to brighten up those areas, but as well as the other areas. If somebody has a question or a thought or an idea, they can always feel free to give myself an email or give it to Mr. Crew or Ms. DeRoges and we'll make sure we mull it around and get some finalized ideas about how we can do this where it's going to be something enjoyable for the whole community.
Thank you. And coming up on the agenda, one of my motions for tonight, some of the things that's been pointed out is we're in dire need of additional barrels. And I don't know if that's a potential art installation project that community members could take part in where there is some kind of decorative barrel, basic 55 gallon green park barrel. And let, whether it's students or artists in the community, design them, set the guidelines and put them out because I think that accomplishes two things. So, thank you.
No other comments or questions on that motion response. We go the next motion response, the alphabet C on micro dog parks. Counselor Leahy or Counselor Gishia, who would go first? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Thank you for the, for the report. So I guess what I'm looking at, when I was saying micro too, I didn't exactly mean you have to just do micro. What I'm trying to say is we had people here, maybe what, a year ago or so, they don't like the dog park on First Street. Whatever happened to the new location, I never heard anything. So I don't know if, if we dropped it or if the dog community dropped it or whatever. But what I'm looking for is, you know, the space could be 40 by 40. That's really not a lot, but it's big enough where if you go to Shed Park, your dog's not running around doing his business on the baseball field. So if there were different locations, and it may not work, but if we could do something like that, you know, it could be 50 by 50. There was discussion on the radio today and they were talking about two or three acres, but we don't have that land available. So if we could get some grants and it could work and we could carve out small spaces, Christian Hill, Shed Park, the Highland somewhere, wherever, if it seems like it works and it seems like the community wants it, then that's what, you know, I think we should be doing. We don't need, and I don't think we have the space to have a, I don't know what Chelmsford has, they're saying it's like three acres and you can, there's probably restrooms and it's all separated. You know, I'm not looking to bring amenities like it's a good suggestion here, but toys and ropes and dogs and balls and, you know, you bring your own stuff to the park. And if that's where you want to take your dog to, to, to meet other dogs, similar size or whatever, that was the thought behind this motion. So just to clarify on my end a little bit more, if that could work, I don't know where on South Common we could, where we were thinking of putting a park, but you know, just something like that. It could be 50 by 50, 100 by 50. The rest spot, the rest stop, dog parks, those are just to relieve your dog. That's pretty small. That's got to be what, seven by 10 feet. So that's really not what I'm looking for, for that. By when I just said micro, I was just trying to be, you know, just to explain that it doesn't have to be an acre or a half an acre big. So when you proceed with this, you know, if it works, it works again. And if it doesn't, but that's what, that's what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
Counselor Musia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do hear some talk about a possible dog park at the South Common in the future. I think that's a good idea because my theory and my sign that was in my house, the more I know people, the more I love my dog. But anyway, that's what I did have. But anyway, yeah, that'll be a good spot. So you can go down there. Okay, John? Thank you. Thank you.
No other comments or questions on that motion response. The next motion response is the alphabet D on honoring AAPI community. Counselor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Managers, for the report. Thank you for recognize or highlight the impact of the AAPI communities, the impact that we have shaping the cities. The last two council meetings, Mr. Mayor, once while you were way, Counselor Weiss here, Kuchia chair the meeting, we did honor ladies who actually have done so much for the low community health centers. We call it Metta Project. She started that with another gentleman still there. So we thought that, you know, before she leave the Metta, which is very soon, we honor her and we did. And she was shocked and she was, that she'd be honored. And that was nice gesture by this council and by this community to honor someone like her. And then after that, you were here when we did honors, Chancellor Julie Chan for the impact she has had on not just the institutions of UMass Lowell, but also in the community. She's out and about everywhere. So I think that's very nice gestures. And our city as well highlight a number of events these past couple of weeks, which is very nice. So that's good. That's good for the city. Say a lot about the city. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions on that motion response? Hearing none. That was the last of the motion response. Need a motion to, Counselor Robinson?
Can I make a motion to take 8.2 out of order, please?
Sure. Let me just put all these motion responses to accept them, place them on file. By Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Drinkwater, on favor say I, post say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. Motion by Counselor Robinson. What, what item number was that?
8.2. We have, we have a speaker here.
Item 8.2, motion by Counselor Robinson, take it out of order. Second by Counselor Nguyen.
Thank you.
8.2 is miscellaneous. Norma Von Fricken, request to address council regarding climate. Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker.
The petitioner goes first.
The speaker first?
The registered speaker is with, petitioner is here.
Good evening. First of all, I have to say every time I come in this room, I have to admire the beauty. And it's such a privilege to be here.
She said three minutes and a letter.
So thank you for having me. And I'm here to talk about climate and how Lowell can get involved. Oh, I'm sorry. Norma Von Fricken, Dover Street in Lowell. So how can Lowell help bring down the temperatures and climate? Well, I can sum it up in one sentence. Like the rest of the country, we just have to change the way we live. It's the only way. We are told some of the things that we can do. Use public transportation, run the dishwasher when full, unplug unused appliances like TVs, drive electric cars, to name a few. But meanwhile, rockets are soaring into space. Big cities are lit up year round like Christmas. The rainforests continue to shrink at an incredible rate. Holidays today are mostly a time to spend more and decorate. Our oceans are turning into dumps and ever more and larger ships are sailing around the world as oil spills like Valdez are killing the rest of our sea life, most which are unreported. Please bear with me. You've heard it a zillion times and it's the same war mindset in Washington with billions still spent on defense while state funding continues to be slashed for environmental affairs, as you all know. Then we should wonder, China and India are using more coal than ever, but China, for example, like much of the rest of the world, is also leaning toward Western ideals like us, materialism. Real meaningful change is a whole new mentality. And we here in Lowell can be a model. It's lifestyle change. It's called minimalizing. It means using what we have, like coal, for instance, too, with carbon capture. Using less, working closer to home. It's one car per family. Investing heavily in state of the art technology, public transportation. Change means no travel by plane, no cruises, no traveling around the country in campers. Where was I? Buying local whenever possible. Stop further development, cutting trees, government owned land, that's right, no takeout, less cans and bottles, prepared foods and less garbage, less garbage, more plant based meals, not meat, maybe once per meek, per week. That's no meat, excuse me, that was a typo, typo. No meat, once per week because about a quarter of greenhouse gas comes from cattle ranches. Homemade dinners and repurposing. And perhaps the great sin and the epitome of conspicuous consumption is food out on our sidewalks here in Lowell. It's disgusting to see food out on the sidewalk when people in other countries would kill for it. So let's see. And oh, also because we're going to be running out of places to grow food. The point is, as our resources are used up caused by human activity and temperatures continue to rise, we have to learn to live with less stuff. And we better re-educate our kids because it's still about materialism, superficial values and making money. Let's face it, not saving the planet. Adapting to this common sense method and changed mindset in their lives will have greater purpose and meaning. They will be happier, maybe less likely to use drugs. They will and gain a greater appreciation for the simple and more important things such as flora and fauna. And they will thank us because we will have done something great for their future. But clearly, and here is a point that I have to underscore, as long as industry remains in the hands of private ownership, nothing will change. But we can make a difference right here in Lowell. It's called local empowerment. As industry gains, giants and foreign investment gain greater influence in our country. The bottom line, it will always be business as usual and politics as usual. They keep winning unless we change government. Because I can tell you, a more central government starting right here in Lowell where decision making is fast is the only way, or it will be too late. Some say it already is too late.
Madam Von Fricken, your time is coming up. If you could wrap it up, please.
A great challenge has been put before us. I'm summing it up. I have one more paragraph if you'll bear with me. What else can Lowell do? For starters, no farms, no food. Find a way through the back door if you must and develop Tewksbury State Hospital into a working home and farm community. We could even incorporate Habitat for Humanity for the homeless and keeping certain people out of prison instead of turning them into losers for life. And that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Madam Von Fricken. Come speak. Any other comments or questions by the counselors?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For listening to me. I appreciate it. You all have a good evening.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by any of the counselors? Hearing none. There are no questions or comments. This motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Nguyen, second by Counselor Gishia, on favor say I, post say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. Are there any more motion to suspend the rule? Hearing none. We now go back to the agenda where we left off, which is on orders from the city manager. 6.1 is the order of 60 day City Flo and City Council order pursuant to chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, City Flo, Massachusetts concerning section 266 dash six, thereof entitled temporary experimental regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period up to 60 days. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Janess. Any comments or questions? Counselor Leahy?
Just one quick question. So when, when we do Highland Ave as a one way, just did we do a, did you talk to all the neighbors and find out if that's what they wanted or anybody, I guess?
Through Mr. Manager, Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Counsel, that was initiated by the transportation engineer, which would have been contacted by folks out in that area. Now, I can't say that every single person was spoken to. But as always, I did talk to a few folks out in your neck of the woods and they were a little concerned about things. But once we started to talk about this being a 60 day initiative, people started to, to realize, we'll give it a try and see what happens. But these contacts come in directly from the, from the neighbors themselves. I'm not suggesting.
That's the major street. I was just.
Not suggesting every neighbor is going to be in favor of it. Funny to see that. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Mercy.
Yes.
Counsel Nguyen.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Ruck, Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Nine years.
We now go to section seven. It's the reports of subcommittee. There is none today. We now go to section eight on the agenda, which is petitions. 8.1 miscellaneous. Mack concern LaFleur Corner Cafe owner, request installation of loading zone signed for designated hours at 1164 Long Street, Side Street. No comments or question. Motion to refer to transportation engineer by Counsel Scott, second by Counsel Janess. On favor say I, post say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. We now go to, well, we're taking up the 8.2 miscellaneous. We now go to the city council motions. Section nine on the agenda. We'll start with the first motion, 9.1. Counselor Yem, request city manager have the appropriate department consider making the intersection of Mount Vernon and Cross Street a four way stop. Second by Counsel Drinkwater. Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, I, we did look at that intersections and recently there was a horrific accident at that intersection again. And residents want to see something being done to reduce numerous accidents that happened there. There was, there is a four way stop at Vanny Street and Mount Vernon. And the resident said it makes no sense because Vanny Street is a one way street westbound from Fletcher Street to, to School Street. So therefore it doesn't make sense to make that section of Mount Vernon and Vanny a four way. So, so that's what the resident want to see. If we can take a look at that, the accident will, the accident report will, you know, confirm the concern of the resident at that corner, at intersection. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. On favor say I, post say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. Motion 9.2 is also by Counselor Yem, request city manager have the appropriate department invite Boston Capital, the developer of the former Merrimack Valley Food Bank located at 733 dash 735 Broadway Street to provide an update to the city council and residents regarding the project at that site. Second by Counselor Nguyen. Counselor Yem?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. And on May 18, the governor, lieutenant governor, along with the housing and community development secretary appointee at Augustus, under Secretary Jennifer Maddox, along with our very own city managers, Golden and Mr. Rich Mazzucci, managing director of the Boston Capital. The governor, lieutenant governor came to Lowell. It says a lot to announce a 246 million awards to 27 projects in 20 cities and town throughout the Commonwealth to preserve 1,600 affordable and mixed income housing unit throughout Massachusetts. And the former, the Merrimack Food Bank is one of the project located at 733, 735 Broadway Street. There will be 52 affordable apartment units being built there. So this is one of the three or more project that is happening in the acre. And I'm very proud of what's going on in the city. And hopefully this project will also rejuvenating and beautify, beautify that section starting from School Street on Broadway all the way westbound to Wilder Street adjacent to, to UMass Lowell. And I'm very excited. Not all the councilor were there, so, and the resident may not be aware of it. So I did, would like to have Mr. Mazzucci to come and then present the development to the whole council and the resident who are watching at home as well. This is an exciting project, one more for the acre and the city of Lowell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. On favor say I, post say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is motion number 9.3, also by Counselor Yem, request city manager have elections department update the city council on the upcoming city election schedule. Second by Counsel Leahy. Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. Do, people ask about the timeline and also the signature requirement at 2021 because it's a pandemic. So all the district councilor can collect signature from all the registered voters in Lowell. But now that the district councilor are in place, so the elections coming up in November, people ask, do I need, including myself, do I need a signature from registered voter in my districts only, or a combination of both at the city wide and the district? I think that's a question. And the timeline is also, people want to know because I met some who may want to jump into the rest, but they just want to know what, when is the deadline? When do, when can they pull the paper to run? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. No other comments or questions? On favor say I, post say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 9.4, a motion by Counsel Janess, request city manager consider adding a paid parental leave benefit for all full time employees to assist recruiting and retaining city staff. Second by Counsel Leahy. Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. This is something that, that came to me from some employees, actually. And I know of at least a couple of employees who have left the employee of the city due to us not having this benefit. I think it's something that is being offered more and more by private companies and even municipalities in the public sector. And as we look at ways to better build our staff and retain our staff, I think taking this step would, would help us build a workforce who's able to, to stay with us as their families grow. And, and you know, they'd be here longer term. So I encourage you to take a look around at the market and see what other municipalities are doing and other private companies in the area are doing in this neighborhood and see what we might be able to do to add for our employees here in the city. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. On favor say I, post say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 9.5, also by Counsel Janess, request city manager provide the council with a comprehensive report on city contractors broken down by race, gender, disability and other standard EEO classifications. Second by Counsel Drinkwater. Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one came to me from a constituent who was noticing that our, a lot of our forms and a lot of our solicitations mention preference for women owned businesses, minority owned businesses, et cetera, in our contracting process. And so the question came up, how effective are we being with that text? So this motion is really just to, to kind of take a look at what we've done over the past couple of years, just to understand where we're at as we move through this process, just kind of set a baseline and, you know, make some, make some real concrete data about where we're at on this. Thank you.
No other comments? On favor say I, post say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 9.6. Counsel Janess, request city manager provide update on the implementation progress and timeline of the 25 mile per hour speed limit ordinance previously adopted by the council. Second by Counsel Scott. Counsel Janess?
Motion speaks for itself, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. On favor say I, post say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. Motion 9.7 is a motion, joint motions by Counsel Janess, Counsel Nguyen, Counsel Musia, request technology and utilities subcommittee meet to begin developing a citywide cybersecurity ordinance, including adoption of a well-known cybersecurity framework and regular third party audits and reviews of policies and procedures. Who would like to speak on it? Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this came out of obviously our recent cyber incident as well as something that came up in discussion here a couple of weeks ago where we were talking about the ordinance we have in the books around our financial procedures, purchasing and everything else. And I think there's a, there's a benefit here. Looking forward as we go down the track here, recovering from this incident, trying to put some structure around our cybersecurity practices and procedures. And, you know, adopting one of the well-known frameworks, whether it's NIST, one of the flavors of ISO, SOC 2, FISMA, any of those protocols that are out there really gives you a strong basis on, on how to build your environment and how to really define what you're doing. Doing things like that as well as naming a chief information security officer for the city and then committing to doing things like auditing, penetration testing with third party companies that can come in and look at us and say, okay, this is the standard we're using. Here's what we're meeting. Here's what we need some work. And here's what's changed in the standard recently. And, you know, I got to put it on the roadmap. I just think it's a way to, to give a little more structure around our technical operations and, and to put us in a better place moving forward. I think the best way to do this is to have a conversation at the tech and utility subcommittee with the law department, with MIS, to really get the ball rolling on this and, and hopefully bring something back that the full council can vote on. So Mr. Clerk, if, if it's available, I'd like to schedule this meeting for June 13th at 5:30 PM before the regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Counsel Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with Counsel Janess, given that we are rebuilding our framework, you know, due to the cyber attacks that we have incurred in the last couple of weeks. I think also having the framework is one thing, but also having a third party audit or review of policies and procedures around that framework is important so that we have a check. Not just we saying that the framework is great, not penetrable. But then again, we have the auditors saying, who come in, the expert in the field come in and said, yep, everything's good. You know, so that's more like, more or less validating the framework that we have or the rebuild of the system that we have. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. On favor say I, post say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 9.8. A joint motion by Counsel Nguyen and Counsel Janess, request city manager provide the city council with a copy of the agreement between the city and South Poli regarding the parking facility and proposed high rise in the Hamilton Canal District and to update the council on the stand. canal district and to update the council on the status of said high-rise who would like to speak on this councillor noon
thank you mister mayor so you know a while back i believe the project is still under phase one the three phase on this project so the garage is almost done there's the cities has been giving tax break to mister lepolis and so the promise is that as agreement in the agreement that they're going to be a high-rise in in the timeframe there so we'd like to see a copy of it as a council but also also like to know what is the you know the plan going forward in the timeframe the timeline i mean of of this project of the high the high-rise so
any other comments or questions here none on favors i oppose say no the eyes have it motions carry motion nine point nine joint motion councillor noon with councillor jness request city manager work with property departments to prepare communication to low residents regarding the cybersecurity incident including advice on steps they can take to protect themselves from the misuse of any potentially exfiltrated data which could include personally identifiable information in possession of the city who would like to present this councillor noon
thank you mister mayor i i know that managers mister managers has given us some update you know twice already at least in writing twice but there's still people out there the resident the low resident still wonders you know you know what's going on you know with regard to this cyber-related challenge and along with what recommendation people can or or should do to address the the constantly evolving challenge that we are facing right now so i think they we owe them that much in a form of corresponding to the resident more or less saying you know this is what happened you know this is what are not being taken or this is this is some of the data been tampered with or 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 not and and what step they should take to you know protect themselves i think that's that's important you know i know that we got the information and and the managers have emailed us today today actually some updated around this issue but their public resident of low a lot who does not have the the access to internet or computers corresponding to home probably help alleviating some of the stress and frustration and or not knowing thank you
councillor jness
thank you mister mayor i appreciate councillor noon bringing this forward to me and asking me to join him on this i think it's important to communicate with our residents just to let them know what information the city has for residents right what's on file not necessarily you know i understand we don't know what may have been exfiltrated and what that data was but i think if we tell people hey you know john q public this is what we we have on file for you your name your address your phone number whatever that is because i think there's a bit of there's been a bit of an information vacuum for the public they don't understand what may have been compromised here and that's leading to anything happening being blamed on the city's data breach and that probably has nothing a lot of it probably has nothing to do with with what information was taken from the city i'm guessing that on city machines average residents social security numbers checking account numbers credit card numbers that kind of stuff is not saved and so really if there's an issue with that it's probably not due to the city being compromised so i think that just communicating with everyone and maybe we need to break this down into categories of residents property owners you know taxpayers business owners employees and just say this is the information the city of low has on our systems from you i think it would go a long way to reassuring people what they might be on the hook for here and and what may have may have been compromised i think it's important that we we share this information openly and have these conversations with folks so that that they can do what what they feel is right to protect themselves whether that's changing passwords getting a new email address changing a phone number whatever people feel like they have to do giving them some guidance around this is this is what we've got and this is what you may want to consider doing i think would be a good thing to do for all the residents and and other folks in the city whose data we have and are responsible for thank you
mister manager
thank you very much mister mayor through to the council if it's okay with the council just briefly like to give a few updates and as as always this is not legal our financial advice on any of this if people do feel as though that they need to change their passwords they absolutely should do that but from the perspective of the city of low we've tried to say this on facebook the updates hopefully the council has received the update today we try to do it on a weekly basis the employees will be receiving something tomorrow it normally would go out on monday but of course because of yesterday's holiday just giving a a weekend review as to what has been happening but in regards to the invoice invoices or people paying to the city we use something councillor that i know you're familiar with and many of the councillors are it's invoice cloud this is pci certified so it's basically saying that when you're making a payment with your credit card it is not it does not save it does not come back to the city we don't have that information for you we try to talk to the press when they call us whether it be a local radio a local radio station or any one of the local websites or facebook but it is something that we've received a number of phone calls from in regards to i'll say the citizen citizen rate concerned about what they what may be out there in the world wide web and at this point in time we don't hold people's vital information i'll say so if you're not a citizen excuse me if you're a citizen of the city of low and you own property at twenty four man row street that's all that's all information that can be can be taken right off the right off the internet today it's public information so that being said i once again i can't give legal advice or financial advice on something like this if people are concerned about it but once again in regards to the invoice cloud if you are indeed paying by credit card or anything that is not something that we keep because and councillor i would lean on you a little bit more in the pci certification world but that is not something that when you pay a bill to the city of low that it comes back and it says tom golden account number one two three four five six seven eight nine paid with this credit card so there have been a number in a number of breaches in the past just thirty days we've been doing this now for four going on four and a half weeks and there's probably been about thirty six major breaches throughout the country there's probably more i just to be truthful haven't checked today as to what the latest number was but i do i do sympathize with everybody that's going through this we are in the process within the next day or so going to life lock and that's for all the employees that are here including our retirees are going to have that opportunity as well and that is that is where we're where we're at today once again the council i do hope had an opportunity to see what i'd sent out via email prior to the meeting i do apologize but we'll be sending that to all the employees as well so they they feel comforted knowing that we are paying attention to this with the number of updates we have going on things are coming back a lot quicker and once again i have to support our mis department as well as everybody that works with us over in the school department the police department the fire department these men and women have been working every single day since this has happened so i once again i will take this back i will answer more of it in in depth but council you brought up a very very good point that i wanted to once again reiterate that i've reiterated on you know local local stations as well is that if you're paying anything to the city of low that is an invoice cloud which is pci certified which means we do not keep your information hopefully that helps for the time being and we'll just continue to push out the information that we have
thank you mister manager if now if someone were to say come into the clerk's office for something or you know come into city hall and pay for something with a check does the city keep a copy of that check or no
mister madjo
thank you thank you very much i'm talking to the CFO about this we batch over at the treasurer's office i want to make sure i'm saying this right this is one step we batch them over at the treasurer's office and that goes into our that goes to the bank so that's not something that we're keeping from a security standpoint either a secure proper proper terminology a secure transmission
okay so the city is not retaining payment information with us check credit card none of that in a on a server somewhere for you know someone to pick up that was that was the concern that that i heard voiced directly to me and i said the city better not be doing that so i'm glad to hear that we're not and i understand that this is you know still a developing situation we're still trying to figure stuff out but i think being as open as we can with with our residents our employees and everybody else is important so that rumors don't grow so that people don't jump to conclusions and people know where to look and know what steps to be taken so that they feel comfortable about their data thank you
mister manager
thank you mister mayor through to the council once again councillor and to the entire council if somebody has a direct concern we've talked to so many different people and residents alike just residents with the concern that you know i live at you know one two three abc street and we're trying to figure a way you know i got compromised the person wasn't an employee did not work for the the city at all so once again if you have that concern please give us a call we want to make sure that and we continue to look through this we have third-party folks we're working with the state and federal leaders on this this type of stuff but as most of you know the the desktops that have been collected that have been wiped and getting back to deployed our folks in mis that that whole team is working extremely hard with our third-party folks to get the city back up and and running in a timely manner and as far as information once again the employees when they come to work tomorrow they'll see what you just the council i think had an opportunity to see it a couple of hours beforehand we'll just make sure that we'll tweak it one more time before tonight
your side councillor no other comments on favors i oppose say no the eyes have it motions carry the next motion is nine point ten a motion by councillor robinson to request city manager facilitate citywide neighborhood walks through scheduling utilizing elected councillors neighborhood groups community members and a dedicated response to identify and correct specific neighborhood challenges second by councillor yam councillor robinson
thank you i think this has been very beneficial in the past i know that this administration has put together something a little bit different where it's pretty much teams of of different department members are going out to the communities and addressing issues but this is what requesting similar to what used to be done before working with you know the district councillors the neighborhood groups as well as walk-through teams i know in my district there is a punch list and and again i mentioned briefly earlier some of the things that we're noticing on bridge street is lack of garbage barrels specifically lakeview ave and it might be an opportunity to incorporate some of the other motions that have hit the floor so i look forward to this thank you
no other comments or questions on favors i oppose say no the eyes have it motions carry the next motion is motion number nine point one one councillor robinson request city manager have the traffic engineer provide a detailed report on potential traffic calming measures at the intersection of corbin and west six street including the potential implementations of lead stop signs led second by councillor drinkwater councillor robinson
thank you there was recently a bad accident again at this intersection i've been in contact with the resident that lives right at that intersection as well and cars blow through that 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 four-way for whatever reason so any assistance from our traffic engineer would be greatly appreciated because there are kids that wait for the bus in that general area in the morning as well thank you
no other comments on favors i oppose say no the eyes have it motions carry we already taken up motion nine point twelve nine point thirteen and nine point fourteen the next motion is is motion nine point one five by councillor scott request city manager have the appropriate department have the have the benches repaired the graffiti removed and the area cleaned up at the park located lincoln and chomster street second by councillor leahy thank you councillor councillor scott
thank you councillor leahy thank you mister mayor i made the motion because this park is not in character with the other parks in my district it it really is in need of a lot of tlc the benches are all broken there's graffiti on the bus hut it has just lacks a lot of curb appeal around the monument the weeds are probably up to your thigh so i don't know if it's being missed on a route somehow like i said this is just definitely not characteristic of anything else that's in my neighborhood personally i mean sometimes the grass gets long but i mean that's pretty much it so if someone could look into getting this really rectified as soon as possible i'd be it would be appreciated thank you
any other comments besides councillor leahy no one else
funny
no other comments councillor leahy
i was gonna ask that the mayor's office this is a great project we've done a few of these throughout the city with the boy scouts girl scouts if you can reach out to some of the organizations these are the projects they love to do work with us and get these parks up in shape if we get the materials they'll go out there and help us out thank you
excellent idea councillor no other comments on favors i oppose say no the eyes have it motions carry the next motion is motion number nine point one six also by councillor scott request city manager have the traffic engineer explore the feasibility of incorporating stop signs on streets that intersect with low street a stop sign at the end of denton street and speed humps and or jicanis on belireka and hall street second by councillor robinson councillor scott
thank you mister mayor yes if the traffic engineer could look to see if there's anything they could do i mean there's lots of great stuff that's been happening in my district over the last year i couldn't even start to name them all but but the one consistent theme that we hear at neighborhood meetings over and over again and phone calls from residents is about the cut through traffic through you know lowell street hall street belrica street actually i would add stromquist street onto the list here so if there's just if we could take another look at this i'd appreciate it thank you
any other comments or questions here none on favors i oppose say no the eyes have it motions carry the next motion is also by councillor scott motion number nine point one seven to request city manager provide an update on the preparedness of our pools and splash paths for the summer second by councillor robinson councillor scott
motion speaks for itself
thank you councillor no other comments on favors i oppose say no the eyes have it motions carry the last motion of the evening is number nine point eighteen because we already taken up nine point nineteen motion number nine point eighteen councillor gishia request city manager provide a capital replacement plan for all dpw vehicles second by councillor jness councillor gishia
mayor chow you save the best for last again the when we when we went to the dpw day it was evident that you know some of the vehicles need to be replaced so we're just looking to see the manager's outlook plan on on replacement of these vehicles as we come in through the summer and then we get towards the winter i don't i'm not sure that some of these will make it through that winter so that's more or less what we're looking for is a capital plan of all the vehicles over there their age condition because some of those conditions for newer vehicles were not well-kept and i think we need to do better at keeping them up but i think we've had them for a very long time and it's time for a replacement thank you
any other comments or questions here none on favors i oppose say no the eyes have it motion is carry we now coming to a conclusion of the meeting section ten any announcements by any of the councillors councillor musia
thank you mister mayor i just want to say thank you for this evening we had lisa golden from the health department we had gianna sandelli she's a community outreach director and reann and ashambro from the co-op team they came and they did the not a knuckle and that naloxin educational training this evening in the mayor's reception room it was a very informative event and if any of my colleagues still want to do that we're going to have it arranged by melissa derozia and she's going to do a great job to poll the council to see if we could have it at a later time because people work it was at five it's a little bit too early so if we could have it maybe i don't know six o'clock well maybe five thirty because it it took about an hour forty-five minutes to an hour very interesting they did a magnificent job and again i want to say and and job. And again, I want to say and proclaim the praises of our co-op team that go out into the city and save lives all the time. They do a tremendous job. So thank you to them for coming out of their way for us. And I would suggest to my colleagues, they're willing to give that training, you know, of their own time. So thank you. If you want to take part in it, it's very interesting. Thank you.
If there are no other, other announcements, I do have a quick announcement. Two, two announcements? Okay.
Sorry. I apologize. I just got to look. I apologize, councilors. Lowell Forward, if everyone has an opportunity, Homes and Housing in the community, we're creating housing, a housing vision with Lowell Forward on May 31st at the Lowell Senior Center. If you have an opportunity to attend from 6:30, 8:30. Once again, that's Lowell Forward, discussing a housing vision for the city of Lowell, and that is on May 31st, and that's at the Lowell Senior Center. I also want to let the councilors know, there are a number of kiosks downtown that are new and that are up and running right now. I believe it's 60 to, I believe it's approximately 60, and they have another 70 coming in. So just looking for that number quickly, I apologize. Right now, there are 70 old ones that have been renewed, removed, 60 new ones have been installed, and 46 of them are activated. So we are moving towards our July 1st self-imposed deadline to get this, you know, to get this done. And of the ones that are working, obviously, revenue is being collected. So, once again, 70 old ones have been removed, 60 new ones have been installed, and we still have some information that's going to be going out onto our website as well as our Facebook page to kind of give everyone a tutorial about how they work. I've seen how they work. It's pretty, it's pretty simplistic even for, for someone like me. So we are going in the right direction on that. Thank you.
No other announcement. I do have a quick announcement. It's my honor, and the city manager's been keeping this under wraps, but I found this through the, found this out through the grapevine, because, you know, I think he leaves it to the mayor and the city council to have the honor of introducing or acknowledging that we have two celebrities on the, on the city employees and the management team. And these are the two distinguished young professional award by the Globe Leader Chamber of Commerce to Connor Baldwin and So if I could just briefly just let the public know who these two people are, if you don't know already. Francesca is the senior planner who oversees the city's land use boards and also leads long-term planning initiatives. Connor, who is here at every one of our meeting, is the CFO and oversees the entire finance department, including the city's operating budget and its capital plan. Francesca and Connor are two employees who exemplify what it means to take pride in your job and community. Their many years of service is not only to be, to the city, but local community organizations is something that should be commended. We would like to thank them for their many years of service to the city and continued service for many to come. The award ceremony will take place on June 13th at 12:00 PM at Four Oaks Country Club in Drakehead. And again, big congratulations from myself and the entire city council. Let it be known also that I am a little bit surprised that Councilor Paul Tayan is slowing down a little bit on his birthday wishes. Last Sunday was also Mr. Baldwin's birthday.[1765.42][1765.42](APPLAUSE) Congratulations. Any comments from any of the councilors? Big congratulations to Connor and Francesca. No other comments? Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
By Councilor Robinson, second by Councilor Musia. All in favor of the I oppose say no, the I have it. Motion is carry. Have a great night, everyone.